I will now come back to order the regular meeting in Lake Forest School District 67, Board of Education for October 23, 2018. May we roll call please, Eileen?
Mr. Ford?
Here.
Mr. Nova?
Here.
Mrs. Laverne?
Here.
Mrs. Sands?
Dr. Lemke?
Here.
Mr. Burkowski?
Here.
Mr. Folker?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you all for coming tonight to our meeting. We're so happy to be having our meeting at Deerpath Middle School tonight. A big thank you to Principal Tom Cardamone and his entire staff for the warm welcome that we received tonight. Why I have the meeting here, first, our board has a goal of increasing engagement with the community. Having our meetings in our neighboring schools once in a while hopefully makes it a bit more convenient. As well, having our meeting at DPM allows us to again celebrate the work we've done here, the Haskins 2.0 Center for Classroom Transformation projects, to name a few. It also gave board members a chance to learn more about the current state of our science labs as we consider upgrading your spaces. I was asked recently if our vision was to have fancy buildings, the answer is no. Physical environment is only one small piece of our overall vision. I'll save the more detailed answer to that question for a future report because tonight I want to touch on a slightly different but somewhat related topic. Tonight I'd like to spend a few minutes talking about school rankings. There's a bit of a buzz in our community currently as a few different for-profit news organizations came out with their annual rankings in the past few weeks. The rankings drive subscribers and the rankings also drive questions. The immediate question many people have is where does District 67 rank? We're Lake Forest, therefore we should be ranked very high. That's usually where the conversation starts and ends. In some rankings we do achieve very high marks and in other rankings we don't appear on the list. For example, the 2016 Chicago Magazine ranking had Cherokee State. The answer is methodology which ranking uses. Different rankings look at different factors. Some rankings value test scores and achievement heavily. Others put an emphasis on attendance and extracurricular activity. Others include diversity measures and they weigh low-income students more heavily. Some such as the niche rankings use survey results from their subscribers, asking if their subscribers enjoyed their experience at a certain school as part of their algorithm. When a person starts looking at the details behind the rankings, the vastly different ranks that the same school can achieve start to be more understandable. Those more heavily. Some such as the niche rankings use survey results from their subscribers, asking if their subscribers enjoyed their experience at a certain school as part of their algorithm. When a person starts looking at the details behind the rankings, the vastly different ranks that the same school can achieve start to be more understandable. It all depends on how the rankings define success and the rankings definition of success may or may not match your definition of success. The one thing that all the rankings do have in common is this, they all take their different measures and they boil the school down to one number. If your school got a low number, you feel good. If your school got a high number or no number at all, you question what's going on. I'm happy to say that this is not how this board, this administration, and this school district thinks. We don't throw a party if the Tribune puts us in their top 10 schools in the world, nor do we fire everybody if NICH doesn't even know we exist. We have a vision for this district that we strongly believe in and we remain focused on that. Having said that, metrics are very important and we do need to know if we're actually doing a good job. Not only does this board and administration need to know that, but our entire community, all taxpayers, parents, staff, and students, need to know that as well. So if the newspaper rankings are not the answer, what is the answer? I'd like to suggest a two-part answer to that question. Key performance indicators and communication. Key performance indicators, or KPIs as they're often called, are the first part of the answer. How do we as a school board, as a school district, and as a community define success? How do we actually know if we're doing a great job, a good job, a fair job, a bad job? We first must define what metrics we care about most. What factors do we really believe move the needle and indicate that we're being successful? We then determine baseline data for those metrics and we measure those metrics again and again over time. The metrics are closely aligned with our vision. If we're doing well on the metrics, it's an indication that we're getting closer to our vision. If we're not doing well on the metrics, we need to figure out why and adjust accordingly. I'm happy to share that we're in the midst of doing that work, determining our district's key performance indicators, obtaining the baseline data, and creating a data dashboard to easily show the KPIs and how we're doing. I expect to be sharing much more information on this in the coming months. The second part of the answer, in my mind, is external communication. Communication with our entire community. I believe we have an awesome story to tell at District 67. That story is described within our vision statements and it's coming to life within our school buildings, our staff, and our student population. Telling our story includes so many things. Sharing the data dashboard, explaining how differentiation in the classroom is optimal for all students, educating the community on our new report card which includes social, emotional wellbeing, growth, and test scores, discussing why third grade reading is so important, demonstrating how physical environment matters, and on and on. There's so much to our story. It's not a one-time communication. To a small group of parents, it's a consistent story told over time. Think about it as a chapter book, told to our entire community through a variety of communication channels and mediums. Over time, people really get to know and understand our story and as that occurs, they look at the news rankings differently. Without key performance indicators and without consistent proactive external communications that tell our story, our community has little choice but to look at the rankings and ride the roller coaster, sometimes feeling great about our schools, sometimes scratching their heads when we don't appear on a list, but not actually seeing the district for what it is in either case. There's a void and the rankings are there to fill it. I personally constantly rank our district, but I use a very different methodology. I rank our district against how close we are coming to achieving our vision. I hope that over time, as we roll out the KPI data dashboard and as we continue to tell our story in a proactive, consistent, and engaging manner, that the community may also come to adopt that view. That concludes the president's report. We now move to the superintendent's report.
So, thank you, Mr. Burkowski. We have three different parts to the superintendent's report. The first one of those is ESSA, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act, and this is the successor act of No Child Left Behind. Many parts of No Child Left Behind were eliminated. Much of the measure and punish was left behind, but not all of it. The annual testing of all students, grades three through eight, and once in 11th grade remains, and with that comes a scorecard with, hold on a second here, my slides are a little bit out of order. With that comes a designation from the state of Illinois. So these designations are coming out, this is part of Illinois' compliance with receiving federal funds, and Illinois has chosen to do two things. First is to provide letter grades on districts, which they haven't sorted out yet and finalized, and the other is that they are going to designate schools. And there are four designations that districts can get. One is exemplary, another one commendable, another underperforming, and the last is I call it a lowest performing school. These were formerly called tiers. They changed that name because it's confusing with the tiered evidence-based funding mechanism that the state has adopted. These are going to be released on the 31st of October, so Halloween. It may be a Halloween surprise for many districts. As is often the case with the state, it's a huge initiative and there have been any number of ups and downs with this. We were able to see parts of the embargoed information that they wanted to release and then the next day we went on and they had masked it again. And also, some districts received one designation, you're fill in the blank, and then that later then changed. And so, we are not entirely sure where we are going to wind up on this. There is a key difference between exemplary and commendable that is worth explaining. The first of those is academic performance in general, so test scores make up 75% of this designation. Other factors like attendance and so on make up 25%. Within the academic performance, there is one key factor that is likely to be a factor for District 67 in some way, and that is our subgroup performance. So, the subgroups are English language learners, this acronym SUPIOR, ELL is what that typically is, but also there are new subgroups that were not part of No Child Left Behind. One of those is former English language learners, so just because you're no longer an English language learner, but maybe you came off of those roles, those former students will count. Likewise, special ed and former special ed. Former special ed is a new subgroup within the ESSA law. And what's important about that is we have a very substantial portion of special ed students. We have, that is by far our largest subgroup in Illinois. In order to make up a subgroup, you need to have 20 students in it, and we will certainly have 20 students within special ed, obviously. Racial minorities may or may not play a factor, low income may or may not play a factor as well. So, again, those designations are going to be released to the public on the 31st and we're waiting to find out what that winds up looking like. I sent a note on conferences today. Many of you will have read that with rapt attention, I'm sure, and I've already received some communication about that. Some people love the way that we do conferences, other people really don't like the way we do conferences, some people prefer the high schools method, other people don't prefer the high schools method. My point is find a way to engage your students' teachers because it's really important. I was a high school principal for a period of time and one of the most common questions was, "Look, my kid's getting straight A's, why do I need to bother going to conferences?" And the thing that was always, that always seemed to make the most sense to the parents that I talked to was, "Look, teachers spend, particularly with, the older your kids get, the more time the teacher spends with them and the less time you do, and you want to develop a relationship with each of your teachers, with each of your kids' teachers." And so, if you have a good relationship with somebody, what are the odds that they're going to give you a call if something, they notice something with your student? Obviously, if you have a good relationship with them, it's just an easier call to make and that's one of the reasons you go. Another reason is the whole town is there and it's nice to see people, and invariably you learn something about your student that you wouldn't have otherwise known because you get to see them through somebody else's eyes. The third thing is a program that I have been looking at, and this dovetails very much with what Mr. Burkowski mentioned in his president's report, and that is external communications. So, I looked at this last year, and again, I looked at it this year. It is a startup company and they have developed this and I have looked into it a great deal at this point, talked to colleagues that have utilized it. The key difference with this type of communication device is that it's not a one-way street, which we send surveys out and our parents become very tired of doing surveys because it's very static. The key differentiation on this is that this is not a static survey, and also, all of the superintendents that I talked to that have utilized this, and I'm very careful about what I bring back to the district, I vet it very carefully. The key difference is they're actually engaging their non-parent community to a far greater degree than they were able to before. So you go to whatever your service organizations are, you go to Rotary, or Kiwanis, or Lions, or whatever you happen to have, you develop a set of key communicators, they're frequently called, but just community leaders in some way, and you send a link to this, to them, and say, "Please send this to the people that are local residents here." And then through that, you change who participates in your school. This is the nut that every single school district is trying to crack. They have great access to their teachers, obviously, terrific access to their parents, but it's the external stakeholders that do care about your school, but after their kids leave, they have a really hard time staying in the conversation. And so, you can't go to them all the time, but if you go to them with critical information and ask them things, they will participate, and as much as 15% of the participants in some of these exchanges are external people. And that's a big number when you look at who we're communicating with. There is one thing that separates this in particular from a survey, and that is the ability for the recipient to not only comment on other questions, they comment on the district's question that the district asks, but they also have an opportunity to rate everybody that participated on that, rate their question that they wanted to ask. And so, it's very, very iterative and democratic with a small d. So they can answer other people's questions, but also importantly, they can create their own and ask that of the entire audience out there. And so, it extends our reach far beyond our internal stakeholders, and the backend of this is very powerful. One of the things that my colleague said is we had very divisive issues that they were tackling, and what we learned was there were certain things that the people on opposite ends of this could not touch, but we also learned critically, there's a whole host of things that everybody agreed with that brought people together to have a meaningful conversation, a very civil conversation then, because they were talking about things that they saw some possibility in. So, this is a program that we intend to pilot this year, and how we want to do that, we're in the development of that, but this will change our reach into our broader community beyond what it is today. So, that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Questions for our superintendent? Thanks, Mike. We may now move to public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we move on to reports. We have one report on our strategic plan. Rebecca, thank you.
We did an extensive overview of the upcoming strategic plan on our ed committee approximately two weeks ago. You have the report in your board packet, so I would like to highlight a couple of the larger initiatives and then answer any questions that we can, and the entire team is here, so if you have a specific question, a team member can also help address that. One of the things that the board and community and our students have been hearing about is the digitally-created portfolios, and the purpose of those is so students can document and reflect upon their learning, and that's one tool to make that happen. Our goal for this coming year was that every student has a digitally-created portfolio, and I talked to Renee Fitzsimmons this morning, and I can already say that every student in the entire district has one set up today, which is fantastic. So now the process is continuing learning by our teachers and our students, how and when, and what best ways to use that, and then communicate with parents because parents will have access to students' learning in a different way as well. Another area is our continued work in social-emotional learning. So over the course of the past two years, you've heard that we have developed Scope and Sequence with Standards and Targets. That was two years ago, and last year we researched and piloted our resource. So this year is our implementation of that resource district-wide, and then we're also working with teachers on how to connect that to content. So teachers come together and look at the targets and standards, look at the resource we have, and then find ways to embed that into our content that we're already teaching. So you'll see explicit teaching of social-emotional learning standards, but then you'll also see the implicit teaching through content areas. For all of our larger initiatives, social-emotional learning, co-teaching, continuing with ELA and CHAMP, which is a classroom management system, our administrative team is developing walkthrough tools. And what those walkthrough tools will be used for is a way to collect evidence that this is actually happening in the classroom, and also a way to provide teachers' feedback and criteria that the work that they're doing is meeting the standards. So, the team is currently in the process of developing those and we hope to have them up and running by the end of this month to utilize this year, and then we'll use that data on our metrics at the end of this year as well. All faculty and staff will be trained in CHAMP's classroom management. So the past three years prior to this year, the district was involved in foundations, which was more building-wide management systems. This year is really our big push on building-wide implementation of classroom management. Also, in addition, the next bullet is connected to that. We'll also be looking at behavioral Tier Two and Tier Three interventions. So now, as a district, we feel we have in place that Tier One curriculum. We have social-emotional learning in place. We have classroom and building-wide expectations. So now, we've given students the tools, and what do we do if students aren't meeting those standards at the present time? So interventions to help students, and Kate and her team will be working through that. Last year, you heard about SCHOOLOGY, so that was the learning management system that is implemented in Off the Ground 5.8. It's the same system our high school has, so we'll have a nice transition, and our teachers are learning the best way to use that, and there's even part of the system where teachers can build a classroom, and they can share ideas. So when we talk about professional development in a different way, we're using online tools to explore ways that teachers can interact with one another and possibly with others across the nation. We're reimagining our learning environments through the 5.8 Science Lab renovation, which I know there will be more discussion about, and we're continuing to enhance our personalized student portfolio by identifying additional non-academic indicators. So what are non-academic indicators and what's an example? The past year, we did Gallup Strength Finder, so students took a survey and identified their strength. This year, we're going to capitalize on that, so they'll do that again, but there'll be more conversation. We built a short curriculum to talk to students about their strengths and how to use those and how they're different from one another. And another thing you'll see added in the PSP this year is a student personalized statement. So in their ELA classrooms, they'll start to learn how to write personal statements, and then that will go in the PSP as well, and we're also thinking about possible goal areas too. So that's just to highlight a few of the pieces of work. If anyone from the ed committee has anything they'd like to add, because you sat through a longer presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Rebecca on the strategic plan? Thank you very much. That's great. I was just going to say, I'm going to talk about some of that in my report, but, you know, as usual, excellent work, very well thought through, very much in alignment with what we talk about relative to wanting to get closer to our vision, and thanks also to Susan and Renee and Kate and Ingrid and others that have been engaged with that from an educational perspective or curricular perspective. I learned a lot by listening to the presentation of the ed committee, as well as what I'll talk about that Kate presented, and I'd love to see some of the things that are embedded in the plan shared a little bit more broadly with the board and the community because there's some great work going on that we need to make sure people recognize and are aware of. Because to Mike's comment in his president's report, people see what goes on in the buildings, and unless we are helping them understand what goes on behind the scenes more or in the classroom that they don't see physically, they get the impression that all we're doing is spending money upgrading facilities, and that's not the case. So, excellent work, thank you for that, and keep it going.
And we're happy to provide a report anytime that you would like, and we can also even do like video reports that are presented to you or that can be shared on the website, so happy to do any of that communication.
And I would take Jeff's comment a step further. The board certainly should hear about it, I think the board knows about it. I talked about in my report sort of the communication being a chapter book, and there's all these different chapters, and you just talked about five different chapters, at least, yes. It's less, I think the seven of us know it. I'd love it if those chapters, each one of those things, was a monthly message that went out to the rest of the community. And I loved what Mike said about the thought exchange, but part of it is not a survey for those stakeholders, it's actually getting our story to them, which isn't a survey question. So I'd love it if you took, if there's eight bullet points there and each one of those is a chapter, that's eight months of content, and it's not one email, it's a whole bunch of, so, yes, let us know in a report, but my point is much, much, much broader than the seven of us.
Happy to do that. If I can have one plug, so, one way that we do tell our story, I think that is excellent, and we will get on that, is through our Twitter account. So if there are community members who want to follow us on Twitter, and any of the administrators as well, there's video clips, there's pictures, there's stories, and that's another nice avenue to kind of get a glimpse into the school during the day, so, excellent point.
So Mike asked me, I don't know, yesterday, what a measure of success could look like, and what I told him, it may not be perfect, nor is it the only way, but, and I throw this to Ann and her department as well, we could do some focus groups now and take 100 random Lake Forest taxpayers, the spectrum of taxpayers, ask them what they know about our story, our vision, these kind of things, and we'll get their responses, and that sets our baseline. And then we tell that story, chapter by chapter, over the next year, 18 months, and we ask another 100, you know, 100 statistically valid, we can start to actually measure, is what I said to you, is our story getting out there beyond the seven of us and the parents that pay attention at APT meetings? So, just a thought. But I think this is fantastic work. I certainly echo what Jeff said to the entire team. Thank you. We move to board committees. We'll start with Ed. Jeff?
Excellent segue. And sadly, a lot of what she said is probably going to be coming-
Rebecca stole your thunder, any questions for the ed committee?
Yeah, she had a doggone it, Rebecca. That's okay. She says it much more eloquently than I can. The education committee did hold its first meeting of the school year back on Friday, May, I'm sorry, Friday, October 12th at the West Campus. All committee members were present. We were joined by Susan Mills, Rebecca Jenkins, and Kate Kavanaugh. The meeting started out with Kate providing us with an overview, or an update I should say, on the implementation of foundations and the CHAMPs initiatives within the district, which is what Rebecca touched on. Both of these efforts stem from District 67's participation in an NSSED cohort that was provided to train member districts on the framework called Safe and Civil Schools. This initiative began three years ago, and we have been sending teams from our various buildings to training over the past three years to learn about that concept and to learn about the various frameworks within this effort, foundations and CHAMPs being examples of those. As background, because honestly, I apologize, but I did not, if I had known this from three years ago when we first did this, I had forgotten it, but Safe and Civil Schools is an overarching approach for implementing a tiered system of supports for behavioral management within our district, with our buildings, within our classrooms. It is peer-reviewed, it is a data-based approach, and it provides tools and trainings that help teachers and staff proactively manage school, classroom, and individual student behavior. So, some of the things that Rebecca had up there relative to CHAMPs, it's about effectively giving our staff a way to manage, proactively manage behavior in the classroom. As a part of this initiative, Foundation's framework helps districts articulate building-level expectations with its stated goals of being to reduce misbehavior, promote safety and pro-social behavior, to support academic instruction and social-emotional learning, establish a positive climate in the building, and enhance staff consistency. And I found that to be a key concept that, in learning more about it, one of the benefits is it allows students to feel as if they truly understand what the expectations are of them in a consistent manner, so that you don't have students questioning, okay, you know, what am I supposed to do in the hallways, and what am I, how am I supposed to act in the lunchroom, and what are behaviors supposed to be within the building, that those are clearly articulated and importantly, consistent. The CHAMPs initiative that was also mentioned is really focused more on classroom behavior and helping teachers set clear and consistent expectations for students in their class. So foundations is much more building-related, CHAMPs gets down more into the classroom behavior opportunities. And as Rebecca pointed out, all teachers will be attending CHAMP's training over the next two years, not only in regard to meeting our objectives from a strat plan perspective, but just because we value this to the point where we really need to get everybody engaged. And this is one of the topics, as I just said, that I think Rebecca and Kate and Ingrid- think, um, Rebecca and Kate and Ingrid, um, it would be very beneficial to provide a, a broad update on how we're doing and what we're doing, not only to us, but to the community. Um, with my business background, I equate the implementation of this to an SAP implementation, for those of you who know what that is, where you've, you've got a whole different series of, you know, modules that you have to link together, and they're detailed, and I painfully was unaware of how in-depth this truly is and how important it really is, so I think that's a great opportunity if, if we could do that at an upcoming meeting. Um, and also in my notes that will be on the board packet, I did create a link to a document that Suzanne sent me that kind of gives an overview of what safe and civil schools are, which I thought was fantastic. Uh, next, Rebecca took us through the strategic plan, so I won't go into any detail of that, because you just saw the highlights. Um, Susan Mills provided us with the professional development catalog for the upcoming school year. Um, there are some offerings such as digital portfolio training, CHAMPs, as we've talked about, co-teaching, social emotional learning that are actually going to be offered over a two-year timeframe. But, um, this is one area that I think we should be extremely proud of the work that we do relative to supporting one of our key milestones, which is talent, um, attracting and retaining high-performing and high-talent individuals. Um, our professional development catalog has evolved tremendously over the last five years, to the point where the things that teachers have access to, I think, are tremendous, and not only what they have access to, but the shape in which they can access them: online, uh, in-service day training. We have academy courses that Rebecca talked about. We have what's called Academy Cadre, which provides more in-depth learning on a particular issue. So hats off to the, the administration and the teachers for the work that's been done in that area. It's fantastic. Um, let's see...
Can I just second that for a second, Jeff, while you look at your notes?
Sure, we can.
I, I just have to say that in reviewing what is now being offered and the format in which it gets offered to teachers, I, I was literally in awe at this last committee meeting, and I think that, you know, for us to just say, oh, we have great professional development that we provide, George, it, it does such a disservice to, like, for people to really understand how much work has gone into thoughtfully planning what our teachers need, what they want, and the ways in which they want to be able to access it, depending on what they already come into it knowing. So the level of differentiation that's available to teachers for their own learning is just phenomenal to me. Um, and I think it is a reason why someone would want to come work here, to be quite honest, with where it's currently at. And I know at least one of our ed committee, um, members, who is a community member, who is a teacher in another district, was like, I think I see some things I'd like to take back to my district and give them some information about how this could be done better. So kudos to everyone who's doing that work. It is phenomenal.
Thank you. Uh, Susan also provided the committee with hard copies of the curriculum documentation that we finally put together, the whole guaranteed and viable curriculum that we've been working on for several years. As we talked about, I think we reported last spring that we had completed that work. Um, and so we were provided with the hard copy of the documents that are on our website, so I urge all of the board, as well as folks in the community, to find that information. It's under the curriculum, um, tab on our website, uh, and go find those documents. Again, the administration has done a phenomenal job relative to providing parents with a overview of the types of subjects and expectations at each grade level. Um, so someone entering second grade can get a clear understanding by subject what their children will be focused on over the course of the year. It's, it's fantastic, so. Good job there. That was good. And then, um, did anyone attend Parent University? Oh, shame on us. I had senior night at Lake Forest High School field hockey, so I had an excuse. But nonetheless, uh, Susan did provide us with a brief recap. Uh, feedback from the event was extremely positive. Um, that's the good news. The, could have been better news is we only had sixty-three people attend. That was still twice as many as attended last year, so we're trending in the right direction. Um, and because of the feedback that came back, I think that hopefully there are plans to do it again next year. Um, and I think that's, it's a great concept and a great idea, an opportunity for parents to get that level of engagement and understanding of our curriculum. Um, there was a question that came up during, during the meeting relative to, um, well, why don't we offer it a couple of times, you know, once during the day, and maybe once at night, and then you could have, different parents could come to different events. And it was, it was quite clear that the amount of time and the amount of effort and the amount of man-hours that it takes to put this thing on, to try and ask teachers and staff to do it twice or three times, really is probably not in our best interest, uh, and would, would potentially put them on sick leave. Um, so we're gonna stick with hopefully one event going forward, but, um, I think the feedback will help us build upon that and, and continue to grow, and hopefully community participation will grow as well. Uh, last but not least, Susan, uh, lastly, shared recommendations that have come from the Center for Talent Development regarding, uh, meeting the needs of our advanced learners. Um, the district is taking these recommendations and working to develop an action plan for moving forward. Uh, next steps are to take, uh, develop a communication approach with the community and to formulate a delivery service, a service delivery plan, uh, over the winter months, so that we are clear as to what we're going to go do relative to advanced learning in the spring. Our next meeting is Friday, December fourteenth, at eight o'clock on the West Campus. That's it. Thank you.
Questions for the ed committee? Thanks, Jeff. Board Finance and Operations Committee, Tom?
Finance and Operations Committee has not met since our last meeting. We do meet this coming Wednesday, Halloween, West Campus, seven AM. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Policy, Kent?
And no meeting since our last meeting, and I don't know if the microphone's working, but, uh, there's no scheduled meeting coming up.
Thank you, Kent. Questions for the Policy Committee? Compensation Committee, Rob?
Well, compensation has not met.
Joint Shared Services Committee met last night in executive session. Moving to liaison reports. NSSED, Suzanne?
NSSED met on October tenth, and I will just highlight a couple of things from my report. Um, Dr. Kurt Schneider reported in, he is the superintendent, reported on his participation in long-range planning efforts in Districts 112 and 203. He shared six NSSED district services coaches are presenting at the Illinois Council of Instructional Coaching Conference later this month, and that NSSED is helping lead the Illinois Education Technology Leaders Cohort of districts, working to attain the trusted learning environment seal. The TLE Seal is the nation's only data privacy seal for school systems, focused on building a culture of trust and transparency. Um, he also invited leadership council members who are interested to attend the TASH Conference, November twenty-eighth through thirtieth in Portland, Oregon, which, as you may remember, I attended last year. Um, and also the National School Board Association Equity Symposium and Advocacy Institute, January twenty-sixth through twenty-ninth in Washington, DC. And I believe we ended up with leadership council members from other districts who are going to both of those, um, this year with Dr. Schneider. Finally, he shared that they are looking into using a search firm to assist in the recruitment and hiring of a new CSBO for NSSED. And I will probably have more on that at a subsequent meeting. Um, the IDEA grant flow funding changes that are required to be implemented by June thirtieth, um, the NSSED Finance Committee has been identified as a work group who will take a lead role on this issue and how, how member districts and NSSED can manage it, as more guidance is provided by ISB on the required changes. And they will, um, be a place where ideas will percolate, be discussed, be shared out, and whatnot. Um, which is a wonderful way in which NSSED can provide that sort of resource as a hub on an issue that affects all of us and is central to how they function as well. Um, and then they are moving to a new information system, and it, Jeff's comments related to the behavior management system reminded me of what they're going through, which is they have a number of different systems to manage finance and student data and attendance, things like that across their programs, and honestly, most of them do not interact with each other at all. So, and they have to provide attendance data back to all the districts, and so, like, they can't even say what attendance is in the district, because each program has their own attendance system, and they each report back to the school districts and whatnot. So in order for them to be helpful to member districts on data and understanding performance and using data, they need to get a better system, which they are in the process of doing, with a system called Midas Education. So more on that as, as it develops. Our next meeting is November fourteenth, um, at seven PM.
Thank you, Suzanne. Questions regarding NSSED? Legislative Liaison, Tom?
I come up empty-handed again. Last month, my report was stuck in the draft drawer. This month, Jordan is not here, but the email system was goofed up, so I, I'm innocent there. So, in November, I'm gonna keep you here for about twenty minutes, and, um, until then, uh, I'll talk to you next month.
We will not be having a liaison report in November. Spirit of Sixty-seven, Suzanne?
Probably won't.
Uh, the Spirit of Sixty-seven Foundation met on Tuesday, October ninth, um, and the meeting was focused primarily on final preparations for their fall events, so I'm gonna report a little bit on the fall events. Uh, the Thanks for Giving Luncheon and Raise Your Hand for Education online auction, the luncheon took place on October nineteenth, and the auction took place the days leading up to that. It was held at the Knollwood Club, um, and the auction culminated at noon during the luncheon. Um, it was well-attended and a lovely event. The guest speaker, David J. Flood, um, and I've given a link in my report, if you're interested in finding out more about him, spoke about treating others with dignity, respect, and compassion. He is a youth inspirational speaker and followed up his engagement at the luncheon by speaking with DPM students on Monday. Um, while final numbers are not in yet, word at the luncheon was that the event had been very successful, based on preliminary numbers, and had raised more than the previous year. Um, in terms of a donor update, donations outside of the fall event are just over one hundred thousand dollars as of October first, and family participation district-wide is just over fifty-four percent. Um, and the cross-town competition update, for anyone who's interested, Cherokee and Sheridan are neck and neck, and Everett is close behind, and Deer Path is bringing up the rear.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Their next meeting is November thirteenth.
Questions for Suzanne on Spirit of Sixty-seven? Thank you, Suzanne. Exec APT, Jeff?
Uh, before I begin, I would like to, uh, go back to my ed committee report and say, I forgot to say thank you to all the teachers and staff who did put on Parent University. It's quite a lot of work, and they did a wonderful job, so thank you to them. Please pass along our thanks. That was wonderful. Okay, Executive APT, uh, met on Wednesday, October tenth. Uh, it was a good meeting, and, uh, some of the highlights, uh, was reported that overall APT membership at the moment is at ninety percent, which is outstanding. Um, the Student Parent Awareness Committee is changing its name again. It's going back to the Emotional Wellness Committee, so the SPA never quite took off, so we're going back to EW. But nonetheless, um, the annual Thanksgiving Food Drive is coming up. Uh, donations will begin on November first and go through November thirteenth, and then following that, there will be a variety of volunteer opportunities for families relative to picking up the donations, loading them into trucks, and delivering the food to families. Uh, so be on the lookout in Friday, Friday folders and, or the Friday newsletter and other things coming home from kids, uh, regarding the Thanksgiving Food Drive. Um, and if you didn't already get a notice from your child, student directories arrived this week and should have been coming home in backpacks. If your child has not given you one, it's stuck in their backpack, I'm sure. Um, in terms of what's going on in the buildings, um, Sheridan and Everett had their Halloween parties this past week. No news is good news, so I assume that means everything went well. And then Cherokee's Spook Fest is this Friday. And last but not least, uh, one of the things that I really enjoy, and I know this is through a, a spirit grant, but Barrel of Monkeys was in the buildings again this past week, uh, working with fourth graders to develop stories that they will write, and teachers will then provide to this group. I don't know if it's called Barrel of Monkeys, if that's the name of the group or not, but is it? Okay. And then they take it away, and from selected stories, they create a play, essentially, a performance, based on these stories, and then come back and deliver that performance back to the fourth graders. I think it's a really, really cool idea, um, and a lot of fun. And the performance will be on Friday, November sixteenth, at Everett's school, and all the kids will be bussed over to Everett to watch that performance, so it should be a lot of fun. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November fourteenth. Des, I hope I did all right?
Great.
Great. Then that's it. Thank you very much.
Questions for Jeff on Exec APT? Thanks, Jeff. Any other liaison reports I may have missed? Moving on to our second public participation. If there's any members of the public who would like to address the board, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we move on to our action items. First action item, may I have a motion to approve the Second Regent of Policy four colon eighty, accounting and audits. And so moved. Thank you, Kent. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please, Eileen.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Human Resources items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now move to the consent agenda. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of a board member. I'll now read the items on the consent agenda. Approval of dispersments, payrolls, and financial statements dated September two thousand eighteen. Minutes of a regular meeting and workshop, September twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. Minutes of an executive session, September twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. Minutes of a budget hearing, September twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. Disposal of audio recordings, February twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen. Does any board member want to remove any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novak?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Foy requests, we had one FOY request this past month, from Patricia Quinn, commercial, status complete. Announcements, Thursday, October twenty-fifth, parent-teacher conferences, four to eight PM. The students do have a full day of school that day, but on Friday, October twenty-sixth, they have off, and we continue parent-teacher conferences from nine AM until noon. Friday, November second is an institute day, no student attendance on that day either. And then Tuesday, November thirteenth, a week or two earlier than usual, is our next Board of Ed meeting, and we return to the West Campus boardroom. May I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest School District Sixty-seven board meeting and move into workshop?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.